Item three, which is a presentation of the final report for the transit feasibility study by the Connecticut Transportation Group.
Speaking, you speak a little louder than you, our microphones are on the way. So.
Okay. Okay. Do we all hear that? Microphone's on the flip, so we need everybody to speak in their Sunday, Sunday fan's voices. All right. Next. Yeah.
It's a bit talking to the microphone this morning.
Yeah.
But Jason Bowles, Interim Assistant City Manager. So several months ago, we hired Connecticut Transportation Group to perform a transit feasibility study. We had two surveys to date and three steering committee meetings, I think. So in addition to two public meetings. And from that process, Dan Nelson with Connecticut is going to give you a brief overview of the report, file report, and kind of give you some guidance as to what we're looking like and where we're at with this. Here, I can take any questions. You have them on the left. Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Again, my name is Dan Nelson. I'm with Connecticut Transportation Group out of Land O'George. I was the project manager for this transit feasibility study. Excited to be here today and talk to you all about the findings of our study and the results of our technical analyses, as well as the public input that we've received throughout the course of the project. And so with that, just flip over to the agenda. So today, I want to talk about the project overview in brief terms, just to give you a sense as to what we're doing for the last six months and scope of our study. Then I'm going to get into a high-level assessment of our needs assessment process. We'll talk about the findings of the market analysis, as well as the public and stakeholder input at a fairly high level. And then we're going to get into the meeting presentation. We'll talk about the recommendations. We came up with a series of alternative service strategies, as well as the costs and benefits that come along with those. And finally, we'll talk about the funding and recommendation considerations that the city will have to take into account into the size of one of these strategies. All right. So to start off here, we'll talk about the project's scope and purpose. When we think about the feasibility study and what this process entails, we can boil it down into basically five key questions. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to understand what the market is for transit in Statesboro. So essentially, who is going to ride it and where are they going to go? That's what we're trying to answer with the market analysis. From there, we wanted to understand what the community's goals are and what the community's vision is for transit. We sought to understand what the different options are, what the costs and benefits of those options are. And then finally, we wanted to understand how do we implement and how do we pay for this? That's kind of the million-dollar question sort of says. So once we got through those questions, we put together our scope and our technical framework for the study. And as you see here in the flowchart on the right side of the screen, we basically broke it up into three phases and with public engagement kind of intertwined throughout the process. That really helped to drive the recommendations and drive the analyses, was both stakeholder and input from the general public. That was very important throughout this process. All right. So to give an overview of what we've been doing for the last six months, we developed a number of technical analyses, including the market analysis, the peer analysis. We looked at several comparable cities throughout the southeast that operate transit. And particularly, we looked at cities that have universities about the same size as or southern, as well as other technical colleges in the area. So basically, we looked at communities that had the same economic basis, Statesboro, but in terms of population, employment, as well as the major employers like universities. And from there, we put together a comprehensive needs assessment. So we wanted to understand what are the needs for transportation in the community and how does that drive the development of recommendations? As Jason mentioned, we developed or conducted a pretty robust public engagement process throughout the study. This involved two online surveys with over a thousand responses. And I just want to point that out because that's actually pretty remarkable for a study like this. We intend to not get that kind of response. And that was pretty remarkable. We were pretty happy with that outcome. And we also, to go along with that, we conducted two public meetings. One at the beginning of the process where we sought input from the public in terms of what type of public transportation they would prefer and what locations needed to be served. And then their second public meeting was a couple of months ago when we had developed the final recommendations or the initial recommendations and got some feedback on those to help screen it down to the final set. We had three steering committee meetings with stakeholders and technical experts throughout the community that kind of guided us along the way as we put together our analyses, as well as the recommendations. And then finally, we had 13 stakeholder interviews. So we reached out to members of the public, or members of the business community, the government officials to get their input inside into what the needs are for public transportation here in Statesboro. So that was a really, I feel, successful in front of the study. It really shed a lot of insight into what the needs are here in Statesboro. From there, we developed and evaluated 11 total service strategies, and we boiled that down to four, which we'll talk about here shortly. We developed capital and end cost estimates, and also ridership estimates. And from there, we were able to understand what the revenue projections could be for each of these alternatives. And then finally, we prepared an implementation plan, or at least a high-level framework for an implementation plan. That includes a funding and cash flow assessment based on the different grant funding sources that the city might be eligible for. And we put together a framework for an implementation work plan. So that's basically your roadmap for how you would implement this thing if you decide to go forward. All right. So that's what we've been on to. I'm going to pause here. So there's four sections here. I'm going to take a break after each one if you guys have any questions. Just here at the end here. So with that, are there any questions before we move on?
I think we do.
Okay. All right. So I'm not going to drill down into the details or the numbers on the needs assessment today in the interest of time. We've got a lot to get through. So I did want to provide a little bit of context in terms of what the needs and opportunities and challenges are that we uncovered during our factifying phase of the project. In terms of the needs, the rapid population employment growth in the city over the last 15 to 20 years has been significant, especially in terms of the transportation disadvantaged populations. What I mean by that is folks who, for financial or physical reasons, cannot drive on their own, they have to rely on other means. So there's a fairly sizable transportation disadvantaged population here in Statesboro that there could potentially be an unmet need in terms of transportation for those particular folks. So that's a very pressing need that we feel does require some additional transportation investment to serve. Finally, access to and from the major employment and activity centers throughout the community. That's a need that was brought up by a number of the stakeholders throughout our interviews, as well as the general public. In terms of the opportunities, there is a lack of transit investment in the city relative to the peers that we looked at, but the specific peer group that we took a close look at, as well as we looked at all the transit agencies across the state, especially for communities that are smaller in size. We did find that generally, the city invests less on a per capita basis when you consider what the county puts into coastal regional coaches compared to its peers. So from that, you know, you put in, you put in less and you get less back. So the per capita transit consumption is also lower compared to the peers. So we do feel like if you were to make an investment, you would realize gains in terms of ridership benefits. Secondly, the connection to the higher education campuses to the broader community that was brought up again by a number of stakeholders, that's a need, both connecting the existing campuses to one another and connecting the campuses to the broader community, so like the students' access off-campus retail services, air payment, and things of that nature. They do feel like, a number of stakeholders did feel like that's an important need. And then finally, there's public, positive public and stakeholder support. That was played out in the survey that we conducted with over 80% of the respondents indicating positive support. And a lot of the stakeholders did indicate that this is a need and something that they would be supportive of. And that's really important as you're thinking about rolling out a new system like this, having a stakeholder champion is very important. So we do feel like that's a good opportunity here if the city decides to go forward. In terms of the challenges, things that might play against the ease of implementation of the transit system. Low population employment densities, obviously it's not uncommon in cities of this size and cities in semi-ruled areas, especially in the southeast. Doesn't mean it can't be successful. It doesn't mean that there's not viability of certain transit routes, even fixed routes here in Statesboro. But that, you know, population employment density is the number one indicator of transit utilization. So the fact that there is some lower density here could potentially put a cap on what the total ridership requirement would be. And the employment and activity centers are dispersed throughout the community. You have nodes of retail and service employment, as well as heavy and light manufacturing employment centers that are scattered all about, and that results in unproductive transit service in a lot of places. So that's something that would be a challenge. And finally, identifying a local funding source is going to be a critical component of this that will have to be addressed. In terms of the community and stakeholder feedback, we wanted to summarize just a couple of the key points here. So we asked the question, what or why is transit needed? First and foremost, people, well, this actually, we heard that from the stakeholders as well. And that really aligns well with the data that we analyze in terms of the need to serve transportation disadvantaged populations. So filling the needs gap is number one in terms of why this particular investment will be needed. Economic development was also cited a number of times as a key reason for investing in transit. And finally, mobility for students, as we just talked about, is another reason that folks feel that transit is needed. We asked what purpose folks would use transit for. Most often, it was cited that work, shopping, medical appointments, and social activities, basically the day-to-day necessities. And again, this ties back to the equity implications of transit. People just need to get around, and they need to get around so they can go do the stuff that they do on a normal day-to-day basis. We also asked where they would take transit, specifically in Statesboro. As you see in the word cloud here, those are the places that came up most often. Downtown, the mall, GSU, Wal-Mart, places like that are areas where folks would want to take transit most often. Then finally, we asked, how should the service be designed? Most often, people said that they want to have a size service cover, so they want the routes or the type of service that is most recommended. They want it to be distributed across the city fairly broadly. They think that's important. Stakeholders, as well as the public, recommended that a fixed or flex route service be provided rather than a demand response. We did ask the question if a demand response, like the coastal regional commission coaches, is inappropriate, that they provide transit. People, by and large, want to move away from that or have something in tandem to that more along the lines of a fixed or flex route service. We heard that from both the public and the stakeholders. Then finally, in terms of when it should operate, people said that it should operate on weekdays during normal business hours at a minimum. Weekday evening, as well as weekend service was also a priority, but less so. So as we'll see here in a few minutes, we've come up with some future priorities that could be invested in over time, where you start to bring in these additional improvements, like weekday evening service as well as weekend service. But initially, we think that you could get started with a system that just operated during the weekdays. All right. So with that, we'll take another pause. Is there any questions? Just out of curiosity, what would be considered normal business hours? Would that be seven, six, roughly? Yeah. We assume 12 hours of service of basically 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And we can move either way on that ultimately, but the purpose of costing this out for right now, we'd be within 12 hours.
You could also say that when you did your online response, that there were 1,000 response.
That's great.
What does, what, basically? What percentage of that is not working here?
What percentage of?
Of the, of the data?
So the response rate, so it was not necessarily a statistically diverse sample. We put it out on Survey Monkey, advertised it. So it wasn't a random sample, I guess is what I'm trying to say. But the response rate of what we did get was roughly, for the first one, I think it was 90%, and the second one was like 75% for completion rate of the survey. You know, I have these maps to tell you what the percentage of the total city population is, but again, it's, we do feel like compared to other studies that we've done where we've done these types of surveys, that was actually a pretty good response.
So basically, that's 1%?
A thousand, a thousand responses is 3% of the city.
So, but that, do you have any idea, did you ask if the, do you have any idea, how many percent? I don't have the number in the numbers, so do you have any idea that how many were city residents?
Yeah. So I, I don't have that number in front of me either, but we do have that data.
And there's something we, we can pull back for you.
All right. So let's move on into the recommendations. There's no further questions. All right. Before we get into specifics, just a basic overview of how we came to develop these recommendations. This is our framework here, the flowchart that you see up on the screen. We started off with what we call the unconstrained alternatives. So we took the findings from the market analysis, the findings from the public input, we came up with 11 initial alternatives. Basically, we didn't take into serious consideration financial constraints initially. We just wanted to put all the ideas down on paper and let the data kind of play out on its own and evaluate each alternative on its own merits. So we put together a list of evaluation metrics, public input from the surveys that we did and the public meetings. And we also, during the screening phase, we did evaluate financial considerations. So we took the unconstrained alternatives, we screened them out, and we came up with four final alternatives, which we call like the constrained alternatives. In other words, what were the minimum viable projects that we thought could be successful from an operational standpoint, as well as a customer standpoint? So what are people going to use? What's the minimum you can invest in something that people are going to use? That's essentially what we were going to, what we were trying to come up with. And then from there, we developed a series of future priorities. So things that came out of the evaluation process that weren't necessary for those minimum viable projects, we programmed those in over time, or at least gave a cost estimate for each of those ridership estimates, so we can understand, okay, if we can't do that right now, what is it going to cost to do in the future? And what are the potential ridership benefits? So essentially, what you'll see here in a few slides is a menu of options for the baseline system and that incremental benefits or incremental changes that you can make over time for this system. All right. So with that, we had four alternatives. One, demand response alternative, which is similar to the coastal regional commission service that's currently in operation today. We had two fixed route alternatives, and then we had one flex route alternatives. You see three maps here because one of the alternatives, alternatives three and four, one is just a fixed route alternative and one is a flex route. So alternative one is the demand response within city limits. Alternative two is an orange loop fixed route. And alternative three is the red and blue fixed route with one route serving the north-south corridor, one route serving an east-west corridor across the street, and then down towards the Statesboro mall area. And then, as I just mentioned, the second derivative of alternative three is the flex route alternative. So to cost out each of these alternatives, we had to put together some baseline service points. So as I just mentioned, there's essentially a base level of service that we felt was appropriate to provide to make it these people. And that involves five-day week service, so operating on weekdays, operating a span of service of 12 hours, so from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. For frequency, or how often the bus is going to come, we assume that it's going to arrive at a stop every 60 minutes for the fixed route and every 90 minutes for the flex route. There's a difference there because, again, we're trying to get these costs down to a certain level and have them be on par with the other alternatives. To operate flex route, to operate off of a fixed route, it takes more time, so it's going to cost more, so we had to bump down the frequency accordingly. In terms of the fare structure, we are assuming a $1 fare for a one-way trip. That's consistent with the feedback we got from the public and what they might be willing to spend on the transit trip, as well as the peer analysis that we did. A lot of the peer systems earn about a dollar or so. We do assume that there would be some sort of discount pass product, which would be approximately half the base fare. That'd be for eligible folks that are low-income or disabled. That's a common product that most transit agencies would offer as a discount. Then finally, the pair transit service would cost $2 per one-way trip. And you'll notice that's twice the one-way fare, and that's the maximum that can be charged incrementally above the base fare by law. So again, that's fairly common for transit agencies to try and reduce that cost, pair transit service by charging a little bit higher fare. For the fleet, we are assuming that we would use short cutaway buses, 15 to 19 passenger buses, gasoline-powered, equipped with a wheelchair. Most of the buses that we're looking at would accommodate up to two wheelchairs, so we would obviously, by law, this is only to be ADA accessible, so that's a definite equipment is essential on this bus. The pair transit fleet would be probably a smaller vehicle, more like a 5A passenger van or something of that nature, just to cut down on our costs. Typically, you'd want a smaller vehicle operating under pair transit service. Then finally, ADA pair transit would be essential within three quarters of a mile of each fixed route. And again, that's a, that will require that if you provide fixed route service, you have to provide the complementary ADA pair transit service within three quarters of a mile. All right. A little bit more detail on alternative one, the demand response. As I mentioned, this is pretty similar to what coastal regional commission is currently providing. It requires that a customer call ahead for, to make a reservation. Currently, today, CRC requires that folks call up 24 hours ahead to get a ride. We think that if the city were to implement something like this, it would give the city the ability to set some service policy, and set some standards for service quality, so they could choose to have a shorter response window, potentially even offering real-time riding, kind of like if you have a mobile app that you could hail the service and get the ride through that mechanism. Or it could be a subscription-based service, like many of the modern demand response services are. So there's a number of different ways that you could, you could roll this out, but the key here is to give the city the ability to operate its own service and set its own service policy apart from the existing coastal regional commission service. While there's some duplication of services, we see this is potentially, it gives the city the ability to start small. As we'll see here in a minute, this is going to be a lowest cost option, so it is something that the city can potentially build on over time if it wants to implement a fixed route in the future. And we think that this would require about two vehicles to operate, two of the smaller pair transit vehicles. Alternative two, this is the orange loop fixed route. So this is our first fixed route option. So fixed route meaning scheduled stops, the route doesn't change, it's very predictable for customers, allows them to show up at a stop and to know that every, you know, 30 past the hour, it's, you know, buses have to show up. So that's the idea here. So with the orange loop fixed route, we're assuming that it's going to operate in both directions of travel. So you have a clockwise loop and you have a counterclockwise loop. It's about 12 and a half one-way route miles. We estimate that it would take an hour to operate in each direction. And we would use one of the cutaway buses for this route. It would actually require two buses, one per direction. And because this is a fixed route, it would require complimentary ADA pair transit service. So as you see here, the route provides fairly, fairly broad coverage across most of the city. There are some areas that, because of the design, weren't able to serve directly on the route, but there could be options to have flex components of this type of route. For example, if a customer wanted to go to the food bank or the social services centers out on Denmark, you could build something, a mechanism in here to allow that upon request.
And just to be clear, one hour, the entire circle with all the stops?
Correct. Yeah. So we did, we did build it in time for stops. We drove it a couple of times. It might be tight, and like any of these routes that we're proposing, there is a break-in period. So if you were to go out and implement this service, you're going to make tweaks to your schedule, you know, what we recommend here. It might be, it might be more, it might be less. But we do feel like this is pretty reasonable based on our analysis. And just to bring background on how we came up with the travel times, we actually used Google travel speeds, and we looked at high and low bounds of what the travel time might take. And then we factored in the time for stops as well. So we do feel like most of these travel times are actually relatively conservative. But again, it would take some field testing to really nail it down. Okay. Alternative three is another fixed route. As I mentioned earlier, this is provided with two separate routes. We have the blue route, which operates in a north-south organization, starting at the Fox Ridge, or formerly the Fox Ridge Conference, as I named, and that name just changed recently, off of Packing House Road. And it would travel down Parish to Maine, and travel down Maine through downtown to Fair Road, where it would access the university and the hospital market district, and then down towards the dialysis center, just south of bypass. So that provides good north-south connectivity. East-west, we have the red route that starts at the food bank, travels down, it hits the social services centers on Denmark, where it travels east to access downtown and it permits off Ruster Road and head down towards the shopping area at the doorstep and bypass. So together, like the orange route, this provides pretty good coverage and connectivity across the city. I guess the downside of this is that it requires a transfer for some customers downtown, and there'd be a capital cost associated with identifying a conceivable location to have a transfer location downtown. On the flip side, it, you know, provides good bi-directional service along each of these corridors, and it provides scalability over time. You could increase service on one or both of these routes, depending on how well they do. You can also add routes fairly easily to this network. So there's some benefits and drawbacks, and we should, we'll talk about those a little more in a second. Again, this is going to require two buses to operate each route, taking an hour to operate a round trip. All right. And finally, alternative four, same route structure, this just provides the flex service within three quarters of a mile. So you'd have fewer scheduled time points with this alternative compared to the fixed route, but you would, you know, still have time points where the bus would be able to travel off the route to go pick somebody up if they made a prior reservation for that service. So it has elements of both fixed route and demand response. This is kind of a good in-between, but again, to get the cost down, we have not enough frequencies, which is a pretty, pretty poor level of service. So for folks that want to use this as a fixed route, it's not going to be as robust as the, as the traditional fixed route. And of course, you could have better frequencies, it's just going to cost more. Okay. So what's this going to cost? We looked at capital costs, which are your upturns, capital outlays, vehicles, facilities, for bus stops, train pulls in the ground, things of that nature. Capital costs range from $370,000 of a loan for the demand response, to about $720,000 for the fixed routes. And the flex routes are going to be a little bit less, just because you don't have to buy the accompanying pair transit vehicles. In terms of O&amp;M costs, you see the same patterns here with the demand response being the lowest and the fixed routes being the highest, with about $650,000 to $665,000 on an annual basis to operate this service. Passenger trips were calculated based on peer data, so we looked at some comparable systems to understand what you might expect in terms of ridership. For the demand response, we would expect that it would generate about 7,000 trips a year. And the red and blue fixed route, we would estimate that would be just under 100,000 trips a year, with the orange loop, approximately 75,000 trips. And then fare revenue is based on the number of annual trips along with the fare policy that we talked about a few slides ago. So as you can see, none of, none of these options generates a ton of fare revenue, and that's to be expected. No transit agency in the country covers its costs, its operating costs, it just don't have them. Usually, you'd be in a good ballpark if you were covering 10 to 15, or maybe up to 20% of your cost. All right. So to evaluate each of the alternatives, we looked at a number of cost metrics, as well as benefits in terms of the population and employment served within a quarter mile of each route. That's a typical factor that we use in transit planning to understand who can access the service, because a quarter mile is typically what some people would be doing to walk. Some people might walk more, some people might walk, walk less. But a quarter mile is generally a good indicator of what that catchment area might be. So what I want to point out here is that where we have the red text, that's on the low end. That's the least favorable metrics, and the green is the most favorable. So while the demand response definitely does cover the most, it gives the most people access to the particular service because it covers the entire service area, but it does so in the least cost-effective manner. So if you look at the O&amp;M subsidy per rider, which is your cost minus your revenue divided by each passenger, it's about $35 a trip. by each passenger, it's about $35 a trip. So that's not the most cost-effective way to, to move people, right? And that's to be expected, you know, any demand response services, that, that's a pretty reasonable cost for a demand response service. But if your goal is to move people and move people cost-effectively, even though you can't serve as broad of an area, your best bet is going to be to deal with a fixed route.
These numbers are all based off of purchasing vehicle?
So the O&amp;M costs or the O&amp;M subsidy per rider is based on that, what a cost to put a driver in a seat and to maintain the vehicle, basically your ongoing annual cost.
I understand that, I asked about the capital cost.
Oh, I'm sorry. The capital cost, yes, it's, it's to buy the vehicles, it's to buy the equipment to maintain the vehicles, to buy bus stops, to buy bus shelters, all the costs that, the initial upfront costs that are required to basically implement the system out.
And each, and each column is based off of particular capital costs for that particular route?
That's correct.
So alternative two is based off of the 714, approximately 1,000 in capital cost?
Yes, sir. That's correct. So as you see here, the, the capital cost, that's, that's based off. What we did here to normalize the data across the different alternatives is we did an annualization factor, you know, based on a 10-year life cycle of the buses. For example, we divided the cost by ten, divided by the provider.
You're not in a vantage group.
Finally, in terms of the evaluation of the alternatives, you know, there's a number of trade-offs. There's benefits and drawbacks in between these, as we've talked about. And now in terms of alternative one, the, the demand response service, the advantage is that it's the lowest overall cost. It gets you a service out the door at the lowest capital cost. And on an annual basis, it's going to be your, your lowest operating cost, but it's not going to attract the right amount of fixed route load. So your return on investment is going to be lower compared to the other alternatives. It does provide the city the authority to set its own service policies, set its own service quality standards, that it doesn't have control over today with the service that CRC is providing. So it does provide that, that benefit to the city, as I mentioned. Gives the city a chance to start small with something that it could potentially build on over time. On the flip side, the disadvantages, it is not cost-effective to a large extent. It has minimal stakeholder support based on our findings from our stakeholder interviews and it's conflicted with the existing CRC service. For alternative two, the orange fixed route, it does provide direct service between many of the major destinations throughout the city. It does require that transfer, for example, between GSE and Mall. You can hop on a bus and get straight there. So that's a, that's a pretty strong benefit of that particular service design. But on the flip side, it designs operational constraints and challenges. When you continually move in a circle, you don't have time to stop and layover without impacting customers who are already on the bus. So from a scheduling standpoint, from a scheduled recovery standpoint, it does provide some challenges in that regard. So that's why, as transit planners, we typically like to stay away from loops, but they are in a lot of cases, especially in smaller communities that have lower population employment densities, a fairly, a fairly good way to provide broad service coverage across the community. So there's, there's pros and cons to each of these and that's certainly one of the disadvantages.
You're saying the loop time varies as a result of traffic time.
Exactly. So you get off schedule, you get backed up. How do you give your operator a break? You know, you're going to have to have what we call a drop-back operator waiting at the transfer center, whatever location you identify as your layover point, to hop in the bus so your other driver can take a break. And that actually increases your staffing cost somewhat. Don't necessarily have that problem with a linear route structure like alternative three. So there's some considerations there to take to really handle. Then finally, the loop does require some out-of-direction travel. So even though you can do a lot of trips directly without a transfer, it does potentially require that somebody takes a, a long tour or stays for a, to get to their destination and, you know, they want to use the bus that's going in the opposite direction to get back to their house or wherever they started the trip. So that's certainly a drawback. Alternative three, as I mentioned a second ago, it's easily scalable. So you can build out the two-route network over time. If one route is doing better than the other, you can choose to, to increase frequency on it, put more service on it, or you'll leave the other route as is or reduce frequency either. Or you could add routes, as we'll see here in a second, to expand the system over time. So that's really a key benefit of alternative three. You can access most major destinations within 30 minutes with the, with the two routes, but again, that does require a transfer. And while there is a transfer point built into that, we can mitigate that challenge with what we call timed transfers. So you would schedule the bus to be anchored at the transfer center, so you can ensure that passengers do not have to wait more than a couple minutes to make that connection. Alternative three had the strongest public support based on our findings from outreach. And fixed route service does provide predictability and consistency for customers, and that gets from both alternative two and three. Disadvantages, some trips do require that transfer downtown. For example, from GSE to, to the mall, you're going to have to transfer downtown. It also requires an investment in that downtime transfer, transfer center. So that's the capital cost that is associated with that. And finally, alternative four for the flex routes, it does expand the system's reach while maintaining some elements of fixed scheduled service, but it does not require complimentary ADA paratransit service. So you get some cost savings there. It's not as cost-effective as the traditional fixed routes because it has, you know, it also involves that core service headway, that 90-minute headway, which can be increased, but it's going to cost more and your cost effectiveness will probably continue to go down because of that. Then finally, there's going to be less predictability for customers. The off-route service is, you know, involved a prior reservation we made by customers, which, going back to the feedback we got from the stakeholders, is one of the key reasons why they feel like the existing CRC service just isn't working for a lot of people because they have to go either way to make a reservation, just do something, you know, like go to work every day. And that becomes cumbersome. So this really, while it doesn't span the reach of the flex route, it involves a lot of the part of the customer to access the service and they're leaving off of the route. All right, in terms of those potential service improvements that can be made, as I mentioned, we can add Saturday service, we can add Sunday service, we can increase the frequencies to a half an hour during the peak period. That was something that we heard from the public during our outreach, is that 30-minute service was really the, the level that people think is most useful hourly. They can get by, but 30 minutes will be what they would choose for. So that could be a potential improvement over time. Then finally adding another route here, as you see on the map on the right here, that purple route would be the next, next logical improvement. That route provides service between the university and the hospital and up towards the State Borough Mall area and up towards East, East State Borough along East Main Street. It provides good connectivity across. I think that would actually be a fairly successful route, but it's actually one of the most, most expensive that we've evaluated.
What?
I'm sorry?
What? Was it most expensive?
The travel time was a little bit longer. It required an extra bus.
Okay. You didn't say extra bus, you mean three buses versus two?
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. Yeah, I think it was three, three peak buses to operate that headway.
You also said that alternative three was the most popular among the stakeholders. Can you say stakeholders, are you referring to local business owners or who are you referring to?
I'm sorry, I probably misphrased. It's most popular among the public. So when we took these routes out to the public, we had them do an online survey based on that data. The red and the blue routes were the most popular in terms of people who chose it as their top choice.
And how big was that, the population that actually had that input?
500, probably 500 people responded to that survey.
Another question, reference to the cost. You said that the, the trip from demand cost breaks down $35 per trip across there. So what's the cost on alternative three, what's the breakdown on that? Per trip?
Per trip? The subsidy per rider, again, that's the cost minus the revenue that you would expect to provide, is about $6.
What's the O&amp;M factor you were talking about earlier, the $35? The actual cost, not the subsidy or what the, what the patient's paying?
Yeah, the actual, the actual O&amp;M cost. So the second column here on this slide is the O&amp;M, O&amp;M cost without taking out the ridership or the fare revenue. It ranges from $262,000 a year up to $665,000 a year for alternative two. So divide that by the number of passengers and you can get that rough cost per passenger without taking out the fare revenue.
So again, what's, what's the breakdown of the cost per trip? You said earlier, $35 for the, I'm just looking at demand, I guess, demand.
Demand response, yeah.
What's the cost? Have you done that yet?
Yeah, I mean, we have, that, that's, that is the subsidy, so you have to add back in, so if anybody has a calculator, 665 divided by 77,400 would be the cost per trip. But we do have this, it's in, it's in our board, I just don't have the number.
I don't have the number.
Yeah.
Nine dollars?
I, I will tell you, it's not going to change much from the, the numbers on the second line. The subsidy, because the fare revenue is not that high, your subsidy isn't going to change that much.
Are you just saying it in the second and third line?
Exactly.
So eight seventy?
But I can get back the idea. I appreciate that. All right, I'm not going to go through all these numbers, but this is what I talked about earlier when I said that we have more or less kind of a menu of options that can be implemented over time. So we have our baseline service plan at the top of each section here, or each alternative. That's what that baseline cost is going to involve for each of these alternatives. And then we have the incremental cost of adding each of the groups. So if you add Saturday service, we provide the cost on that line. If you add Sunday service, for the fixed route and the flex routes, if you increase the frequencies, we have the cost associated with that. The key points here are that if we add weekend service, it does provide a good return on investment. You know, we see that at least on Saturdays, you have a good return on investments because you don't have to increase your buses, you don't have to buy more buses, and you don't have to operate more buses. Whereas if you increase your frequency, perhaps on weekdays, if you're to increase it to 30 minutes, it would involve buying more buses and operating more buses in your service, which starts to bump up your cost again.
How does that nine bucks subsidize compared to other places? It seems like a very high number per ride. I mean, basically, we're at the city of eight nine bucks every time somebody gets on that bus.
Yeah, that's, that's not uncommon. That's, that's fair.
That's a normal number?
Absolutely, absolutely.
For the volume? For that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, especially, yeah, because, because of volume, because you're having, you have a smaller.
Because of the low volume here.
Exactly, yeah. That is fairly common. We can provide that information separately if you want to look at some of the subsidy amounts for the comparable systems.
You mean fairly common in rural transportation?
It's common everywhere, even, even in Turkey. I mean, it's a, it's an investment like this.
Like the ride?
Like everyone makes in any sort of service, it's a, it's an investment that's made because other benefits are realized, like taking cars off the street or whatever their policy goal is. That's an investment that you can make.
Now, just, you make, that statement you just made, that's more prevalent in larger areas.
Absolutely.
Taking cars off the street is not probably what's going to happen here.
Exactly.
Okay, just to be clear.
Yeah, I mean, let's just look at this with 77,000 riders, right? At 260 days, if you're on Friday and Saturday, Saturday, Sunday, that's only 240 people in there, 240 rides, okay? So that's, same, if somebody rides it one way, back the other way, that's only 240 people in there. It's a pretty small number.
It is, it is.
Eight dollars and 60 cents for loop two.
Okay. Sorry, I was off topic.
You guys are looking for real numbers.
I appreciate that, don't I? Hey, any other questions on this before we move on to the last section? Okay, so let's talk about how to potentially pay for this if the city decides it wants to move forward. So in terms of the funding and implementation plan, these are the basic steps that the city would have to embark on if it were to choose to implement one of these alternatives or completely different alternative, if you want to go in a different direction. Regardless, you could go through these steps. You want to select that preferred alternative, identify your funding sources and select a delivery method or a management method for how you're going to actually operate the service. Develop a financial plan based on the preferred alternative, as well as the funding sources that you'd be eligible for. And finally, establish that startup board plan that I mentioned earlier. In terms of the potential funding sources available for transit, we can look at it in three separate buckets. You have the federal, state, and local funding sources. On the federal side, it's administered through the Federal Transit Administration. Eligibility is based on, within a rural status as designated by the state of Europe. Right now, State Borough is rural. So the most applicable grant program would be FTA's Section 5311, which is basically assistance for non-urban transportation systems. It provides up to an 80% match, 80% federal, 20% local for capital, so for buses or any other capital expenses that would have to be entered at the start of the system, the feds will pay up to 80% if, if you're successful in obtaining that grant. On the operations side, it's up to a 50/50 match. And that's important because once a system becomes a large urban system, and State Borough has a long way to go, but that, that 50% goes away and the feds have to cover any of the operating costs. It's actually advantageous that the city decides that it is if it were to want to get operations funded.
And you said again that we are a long way away from.
So even once you become an urban, urbanized area, there's a 200,000 population threshold.
Good.
Right, so, so you got a way to go. So even if you were a large urban, you'd still get a 50/50 split within a different grant program. I won't get into specifics of that. So that's the, the federal funding that you're looking at today.
Because we're getting that funding right now?
It is. So the city would have to, we'll talk about this on the next slide, the city would have to apply with the state to become the grant recipient here locally to obtain that funding. On the state side, it's, there is a small amount of funding that could potentially be provided, administered through GDOTs and their middle division. There's currently no dedicated funding source in the states, although they're working on legislation that has been up for consideration the last couple of sessions, has not passed yet, but if it does pass in the future, could potentially provide some level of ongoing dedicated funding for transit, but it doesn't exist today. So there is limited funding for capital projects, that's based on annual appropriations that get built into the state budget. And generally, this is limited to up to half of the local match for a federal grant, so that would provide up to 10% of that capital cost. So essentially, you split that 20% with the state taking half and the state taking half for capital expenses. On the local side, you obviously have the directly generated revenues through the fare box. While minimal, it does provide some level of direct, direct revenue. You could potentially gain some advertising revenue, that's typically a pretty small amount, but it is an option. Other local sources, including the general fund, that's fairly common for agencies, for cities of this size that operate transit, it's just to make the general fund appropriations for transit. Or a special purpose local option sales tax, which obviously is in play here to a small degree with the, with the T-Slos funding, that's to allocate for transit. Finally, property taxes, less common, less politically viable in a lot of, in a lot of cases for transits. But local partnerships could be potentially an area where you could explore opportunities for additional funding in, in, into the future. The university is an example where in a lot of cities, municipalities have partnered with the local universities to share the cost of transit, as well as like the business community that would potentially see value in funding.
I might ask you to touch on that a little bit. Having lived in larger universities, cities, typically it's the university that, you know, handles the student population traffic. In other words, they're the ones that drive you down to the residential areas from the university campus. So do you find it's typical in a university-sized town for the city to subsidize the student ridership? See what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Like I said, I've typically found that you go to, like the University of Texas, there's certainly a city bus system, but the bus system is primarily for the students and centered around the university and is operated by the university.
Yeah.
Same thing at the University of Florida, same thing in, given the need.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's correct. Typically, there's going to be two separate systems. There are some examples of consolidated systems. It actually wanted to appear in the agencies that we looked at in this class set. There are some examples of consolidated systems, and actually one appeared in the agency that we looked at in this class. Clemson has a long history of having a pretty strong partnership between the city and the university, and that's, the university probably kicks in a larger share of the annual O-N-M cost for that system. But that is an example where those costs are shared. Where I come from, University of Kansas, there was a consolidation of the two systems years back, where the city and the university not together decided that they were going to create some efficiencies by operating it through a one entity, so the university that contributes into that system as well as the city. So there's a number of examples, and it goes both ways. It really depends on what that relationship is between the two entities, as well as the other funding considerations. So it is an option, whether or not that's viable in return. It's, you know, still a question. All right, so the bottom line, so once we take into account the potential funding split for each of these grant programs, we can understand what the initial capital outlay would be for the city to maximize its federal contribution. So this is, in other words, the best-case scenario that the city could expect. If it were to maximize the amount it puts in, to maximize the amount that the feds are going to contribute to the system. So as you see here, this bottom line number, anywhere from thirty-seven thousand for the demand response is what the city would be responsible for, up to about eighty thousand or a little bit more than eighty thousand for the two fixed route alternatives, and the flex route alternative is somewhere in the middle. So this is just for capital. So again, this is upfront cost required to buy the buses and get their equipment and facilities. On the O-N-M side, we assume that fifty-fifty split after we take out the fare revenue. And that leaves you with funding responsibility of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year for the demand response, up to about three-hundred thousand dollars a year for the fixed routes, and again, the flex route being a little over last, eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. So this is what the city would have to come up with on an annual basis, recurrent basis, to operate the baseline service plan that we've laid out.
How reliable are the fifty-three-eleven funds?
I'd say.
You know, because I know we've had police officers hired, firefighters hired with federal grant matches, and then two years later they go away.
I'd say compared to most, because it's a formula fund, it's not like a competitive grant, so it's not going to disappear in a couple of years. You've got to apply for it every year, you've got to go to the state, it gets put into statewide transportation program, and then it gets to the legislature, it goes through the process, and will actually, to give a segue.
But it's not competitive to the formula.
It's a formula base grant, so I would say it's fairly viable in that regard. All right, so if the city wanted to move forward and they wanted to obtain federal grants, this is the process. The cycle actually starts in November with the sub-precipitant grant applications due to GDOTs. Over the next several months, that application, repeat process takes place at the state level before GDOT moves into the legislature for their approval during the annual session. Once that gets approved, it gets pushed up to FTA, and they make their determinations of grant awards. And then by late spring, around June, GDOT notifies the sub-precipitants whether or not they were successful in obtaining those grants. So it's about an eight- or nine-month process, but the key point here is that we need to start this, depending on when you want to go forward, we need to start in the fall. So you do have some time if this is a process, if you wanted to start it this year, there is some time to get the ball rolling, get that application together. Another point that I want to make, GDOT is doing a statewide transit plan currently during that process. As we speak, they've reached out to the city to get involved in that if they're interested. So that's something that definitely be involved in to position yourselves to be competitive for the grant funding this fall. All right, moving on to the service delivery options. This is the management structure that will need to be considered in terms of operating the system on a day-to-day basis. So there's basically two ways you can do it. The city can own and operate the system itself through what we call a direct operation. As you can see in the matrix here, the city functions are across the board with option A, which is the city on it operating. So anything from grants management and planning all the way down to the capital acquisition and operation of the buses, connected by the city. At the other end of the spectrum, we have option B, which is what we call a turnkey contract operation, where you farm out essentially everything except for the oversight of that contract and your grants management compliance functions. So this would involve hiring a contractor, issuing an RFP, hiring a contractor to basically take care of everything, soup to nuts, including purchasing a fleet and facilities. We would certainly encourage you to consider hiring a contractor that can obtain an O-N-M facility, a place to maintain the buses, because that's going to be your biggest expense upfront by and large. So that's something we certainly encourage. So option C is a hybrid of A and B, where the city still owns the assets, so the city would go out and purchase the buses and shelters and everything else that goes along with operating the system, but it would contract out the O-N-M and have annual day-to-day operations of the system. And there's various permutations, and there's a spectrum of what you can contract out and what you can directly. This gives you a good high-level overview of what those scenarios might involve.
Sorry, question here, you mentioned the bus, what's it called, station stops?
The transfer center?
No, no. I'm assuming each bus stop has some kind of a shelter or a bench or a marker or no, or nothing?
Well, a marker, certainly, yeah.
That's it, okay.
Yeah, we factor that into the capital cost, we assume that you're going to put a hole in the ground and sign on it at most of your stops. Now, there's going to be a couple of key stops where you're going to want to consider a shelter. So if you did option three with the two routes, where you have a transfer center downtown, I would definitely recommend that you have a shelter there, and we put those costs into our assumptions based on that. Over time, you'll want to evaluate the system and see what your highest ridership stops are, and then consider shelters at those stops as well. But to start, we did not assume a bunch of shelters on our book list. So as you can imagine, there's benefits and drawbacks to each of these. In terms of option A, the city does retain full control of the service, of that service quality, can manage all aspects of the service directly, that's a benefit of having this direct. Disadvantages, it does require substantial expansion of the city staff, and it requires that the staff have particular technical expertise in transit that they might not have today. Requires a significant initial capital outlay, and there is less flexibility and scalability. So if you want to add another route easily, an O-N-M contractor can require that you can put clauses in the contract that say that you can increase service to a certain level and retain that same pricing on a per-hour basis. So a contract would give you that flexibility, where if you're the city, you're doing this directly, you're going to have to hire more people and train more people and bring them in, and it's going to take time and cost. In terms of option B, the turnkey contract operations, the advantages are that it does reduce your upfront risk and capital outlay. So if you were to have your contractor bring the capital assets to the project, they're basically just going to lease those buses back to you, but that cost is going to get built into your monthly cost that you pay the contractor. The contractor does bring that technical capacity and expertise, and that's going to result in a faster mobilization. So on the next couple of slides here, when we talk about how long this is going to take from start to end to get implemented, this is going to be the way that you do it, I think. On the downside, you do have higher annual costs associated with this, just because you have those capital costs put in. And then the contractor could potentially retain the vehicles and facilities at the end of the contract. For whatever reason, you have contractors that you have to fire, or whatever reason the contractor needs, they retain ownership of the vehicles, you have to be very mature to utilize them. Option C, again, the advantage is the city owns the assets if the contractor changes. The contractor brings that technical capacity, just like option B, and it results in faster mobilization. On the downside, it does require significant initial capital outlay on the part of the city. So those are the kind of the high-level pros and cons of each of those options. Let's discuss more in the report. All right, last slide. This is the startup work plan. I'm not going to go through each one of these bullets. This is just to illustrate everything at a high level that has occurred. It's a lot of work, there's a lot of technical tasks, as well as policy tasks that have to take place. We would recommend, if this is something that the city wants to be able to deal with, that the city establish a startup committee or a transit advisory committee to guide that process, to help with some of the policymaking questions that would have to occur over the next months that would follow as you see in the system. We think that from start to end, this would take about two years, based on our experience elsewhere. Typically, it would take about two years to implement a system, especially if you're doing the procurements directly. So if you're going out and buying the vehicles, that's going to take some time. But if you were to contract that service or contract the acquisition of your capital assets, that could potentially reduce that a little bit of time. So it could be maybe as little as eighteen months on the low side, but I would say largely about two years from start to finish to get the system up and running. So this is spelled out in a little bit more detail in the report in terms of what's applicable to each of the options. So you're not necessarily going to have to do each of these steps for certain options or for certain service delivery methods, so that's laid out in the report. But at a high level, this is what you're looking at to start the system. All right, so with that, if there's any more questions, be happy to answer.
Any questions, counsel? Can you give from the gentleman?
I would be sorry to point it out, I was on the steering committee, and in that process, I learned about First Transit. First Transit is the contractor that the university has been using for the past ten years, and they just recently re-upped their contract. They have capacity out at Okichi Tech in that area where they have service there on buses out there. But the point is that they are an independent contractor, and they could take on an additional contract with the university plus the city and be able to address the needs that way without the city taking on all the responsibility of hiring drivers and overseeing the maintenance of the buses. So that's something we ought to keep in mind, that we've got that asset here in our community already working that maybe we could take advantage of First Transit.
Certainly, that actually does provide a really strong advantage for the contracted model that you have a contractor that's here locally, has a shot that's built more than out, that's going to be a way to reduce costs and get a speed of that mobilization and time required for the system starting, so that's a great point.
Well, maybe there's a possibility of, I mean, we talked about there being cooperation between us and the university, and maybe that's the way to do it, since, again, some of these bus lines are going to need to go through the university, but I have a hard time putting city funds towards moving students around when they're already paying. Trust me, I'm a student, I pay bus fee, so, and I don't use bus, so it'd be nice to see them working with us.
Sure. I don't know, I think we get into a little dangerous area, because those students are citizens. No, they live in states where they're citizens. And so I think that we get into a little dangerous area when we try to divide out our population. Because at the end of the day, this is a project that we're looking to help support economic development. And in looking at the numbers and seeing the opportunity where we could get the additional federal and state funding is a real plausible possibility for the city and states alone. And I think that as we move forward, we have to understand that we really have to move our city in a direction where it's going to protect our largest economic engine, which is Georgia Southern University. And with us not being the sole owner of that brand anymore, that puts us in a very brand-new reality. So I think that as we move forward, we just can't think about today, we've got to think about what this looks like in the future. But I thank you for your presentation, well thought out. I'm very excited about the number of responses that we had, the number of people that said that this is a need, this is something that they want, and so hopefully we're able to work to do this in a sustainable fashion and get this done.
All right. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to do this study on behalf of y'all. It's been a pleasure working with Karen and Jason. Certainly, if you have any other questions, they can ask to get ahold of me, and be happy to follow up to answer any further questions you might have.
Just really quick, thank you for this. This final report and this presentation, is it available online for our citizens in this district?
It will be, it will be. After today's presentation, Dan and his staff will be going back and finalizing the final report, so we'll make sure that's available.
And these slides as well, if you need them, that's all part of the report.
We can do that as well.
Thank you. And so, very forward, one remark is, what is the leading transit system in the U.S. right now? Who's to go forward, in your opinion? Is it California?
That's a tough question. You know, in terms of, because there's various sizes of systems. Obviously, what we're talking about here is on the smaller end of the spectrum. But you have properties as large as New York City Transit, but obviously, you're the largest transit operator in the country. In terms of what I would say are the most forward-thinking, I'd say Dallas are in the sense of working with new mobility options like Uber, Lyft, taking into consideration all the new technologies that are coming into play right now with new technology outlets, changing transportation, there are still a lot to incorporate that into your service model. We didn't necessarily touch on that today, but there are components of that that the city can consider, especially if you were to think about doing a demand response for the flex route. We can work with companies that have that technology at their disposal to allow you to deploy the service in a way that's more cost-effective than you could potentially do it. And you could have done it in the past with traditional dispatching methods. Leveraging the new technology that's out there allows you to do a couple of things.
What I agree with you saying is, and one of the things we need to be mindful of, be so flexible to the rapidly changing transportation mix. Because self-driving vehicles are coming, and they're being managed driven by the casualty cost on the highway. Because just like airplanes in the sky have the technology, trucks on the road can have that, and then we come to our own personal vehicles, and very soon, I mean, we're rolling out five G, GPS exactly, and three D. I know their cars have the collision avoidance systems in them, and.
Uber and Lyft just went public, and they're expanding the service.
Right, so that's.
And LimeScooter. I know all y'all are out there, be bopping around a lot of people.
I love demand response, that, and let me ask you this, as far as ADA, does Uber, does anyone know, does Uber have capability for ADA, wheelchair?
Not as its base service offering, but there are a number of communities throughout the country and internationally that have partnered with Uber to provide demand response services. And they can do it actually more cost-effectively, so we talked about, what, thirty-five bucks a trip? Uber can do that for cheaper, obviously it's subsidized in other ways, you know, through investor capital, but that is potentially an option that could be with that to partner with taxi agencies like Uber or Lyft to provide that type of.
We best, it takes a ridership to a quarter-mile walk or something. And I heard your quarter-mile flexibility for the route, and I didn't quite understand how that's.
So the fourth alternative, alternative four with the two, the red and the blue route, there's an alternative where we could operate flex route, we could operate three-quarters of the mile, we could operate that route. So the vehicle would depart the route to pick somebody up at their house or place.
At the corner, yeah.
So that's an option.
Counsel, I would encourage you to take it with the chapel ill of the public transportation system. It's a good product between the university and the cities that stays with it. So that's another technical benefit. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Any other comments? Seeing that none, there's none, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Exactly.
All right, all those speakers?
All right, y'all take it.
That was great, guys, thanks.